Call to order, the Ashland Board of Commissioners, meeting for Thursday, April 25th. Start with invocation and then pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you today for our city and have you blessed us in recent days. We invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers and ask that you preside over this new meeting today. Give this Board of Mayor and Commissioners wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray always, in Jesus' name, amen.
Let us stand, absolute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a motion to receive and file the agenda.
Some moves.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting held on April 11th, 2024, and the recess meeting held on April 12th, 2024.
Some moves.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Commissioners, just want to say thank you all for all the hard work you're doing every day on behalf of our citizens. You all touched base with me this week on many different matters, and a lot of it's good stuff, and I think some of that's going to be discussed today, and just want to welcome our citizens today also here for a maybe exciting meeting, probably not, it's going to be audit. So it's going to be a long one, but it's an important meeting, isn't it? We'd work all year long for this. Our finance department, our A1 finance department, has worked very diligently to make sure this is ready for us today to review, and so we appreciate your all's hard work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Spriggs.
Oh, okay. Hello, everybody. It's good to see a lot of faces in here today. Just have a couple of things. Gosh, everything's been really busy. I was just saying, my calendar looks like it was shot up with a shotgun with all the little dots on it, but anyway, I just want to remind everybody that National Prayer Day is coming up on May 2nd, and there will be a ceremony in the park at the gazebo at 6:00. There's also another one, the hospital, at 8:00 a.m. on that day, so remember to pray for our city and our country and our state. Also, just want to say beforehand, Happy Mother's Day to all moms out there, because we'll be missing, we won't be meeting until after that, so I just want to say Happy Mother's Day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Goode.
I just want to welcome everybody to this new meeting. She took my thunder on National Day of Prayer. I've been on that committee for years, and we're meeting this year at the museum at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, so I want to make mention, that's next Thursday. I want to give kudos always to our parks and recreation. The Little League fields look primo, and they're up and running, full steam. I was there the other night, little girls softball, baseball, and rookie league. I coached third base the other night, Sean, and I didn't kill any of the umpires, so I was, I was, my wife was proud of me, but it was up in, the fields looked great, new dugouts in that, in that rookie league, or the little girl softball field. And you've noticed, if you go down Elm Street, the Putnam Stadium, which I say Putnam is John Clark Oil Stadium now, but I'll always call it Putnam, is undergoing a complete renovation with new turf, over a million dollars, and so we're thankful for that. It's due to be finished July the 15th, and so, and then, you know, it's just good to see construction all over town. Everybody complains, but that's, that's a good thing with the hospital and with Putnam Stadium and what we've got going on. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Blam.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Good afternoon. The busy schedule, I just, I can't relate to. I have no, no idea about that. So first of all, I want to say, recognize that it's Autism Awareness Month for everyone in our, in our community, both, both those who have autism and, and those who are caregivers, lots, lots of folks in our city, both care for and experience that, and my wife is a caregiver, so it's important to me to, to recognize that. Also wanted to mention Aspire Conservatory, who a lot of folks are familiar with, wonderful organization that works in the performing arts with, with children. They have their production of Willy Wonka Junior. That'll be happening in the first weekend in May at Raith's and High School, so I encourage you. We went to a pancake breakfast where they, they performed throughout the breakfast at Grace Nazarene Church in South Ashland, and, and just fantastic, I mean, very, very talented youngsters in that group, and so I wanted to mention that. Thank you very much.
All right. City manager.
Thank you. Slide please. Just wanted to cover a couple of things. This is an ongoing project. This is a former playground in East Ashland. You'll see some before pictures, the, you really don't see a lot of the details, but like in the upper left corner, that red device has cracked, the plastic has cracked on it. Next slide, please. This is a new playground that's been installed. I want to point out that this has been done with CDBG money. There still is some additional work to be done in there, mainly landscaping, but I'd like to thank Jacob Reisner for all of his efforts and everybody else on the team who's worked towards this. Again, this is CDBG money, the, the funds that we've spent previously on parks, I think has been all general fund, correct, up to this point? Yeah, so, anyway, just take a look at that, it's a really nice upgrade. Next, please. Also want to point out, just periodically, it's important, I think, to reiterate the issues on recycling. This calendar year so far, we've had close to 3,000 people drop off recycling with about 179 per week. 317 total bins have been filled with an average of 19 bins per week, and the so what on that is that we have a total of 40 bins. There's 20 bins down there, but they get dumped twice a week, so we're still only at about half capacity for those. They're, they're utilized by city residents. There still is that option for folks outside the city to pay a small fee to utilize that as non-city residents, and I believe we've had 19 recycle permits in that category this year. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is the much talked about pothole, if you will, the manhole cover for Windstream on 13th Street. If plans go as expected, Windstream will correct that next week. They're in final coordination with, with KYTC for the proper marking of that road, but if you've come around by Speedway and you come around the corner by Fuji, everybody has to do the dodging game on that, and that's going to be fixed. That is a Windstream manhole cover, and they're the ones that had to fabricate a solution to that because it's not a standard pothole, and I'd like to thank Mr. Cole for, he has been continually on that, on the hunt with them to get that fixed. Mr. Cole, thank you very much for your diligence in pursuing that. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that up, because every time I go by there, I know Windstream has kind of been dragging their feet a bit on that, so I'm glad that's finally going to be fixed.
They owe me an upper plate.
They actually, they did-
Like a dinner plate?
No, no, this plate right here.
Oh.
They did have it scheduled before the, the recent windstorms and all that, and that threw them off for a couple of weeks, but they're going to, supposed to happen next week.
The last excuse was they were needing some, it was a lot more complicated, and they needed some sort of yotted doo-dah, you know, yeah, so, okay, good.
I want to say one more thing, though you talked about the playground up there, that's, that's a well-needed, that's a great project in East Ashland, and the one at Waterworks is just full all the time. It is, is great. Great addition up there next to the ball fields.
Yeah, I want to tell a little story about the East Ashland, so, and I think staff has been open with the fact that for years, just to be honest, that side, that part of the city has been neglected, and now, you know, with the Unity Center and that playground now, when the Unity Center opened, I remember we were there after the events were over, and the kids that live in the immediate area, they were kind of looking, not sure if, you know, is this a playground we can play? I said, "Yeah, come on, it's yours." And so when we go there now, it is theirs. It's, and it said, "Remember, you got to take care of it, make sure people take care of it." But it is just a wonderful thing to see the, the kids in those neighborhoods have those playgrounds, and, and it's, it's great to do. Thank you so much to the staff for doing that.
Absolutely.
Now the fun part. Are you all ready? Okay, I think we're ready.
There's a look.
All right, audit presentation.
I have to say, thanks for allowing us to be out, you know, doing the audit again. Kind of took offense when you said this would be a long meeting, that just implied that I'm going to be long-winded, so wasn't sure how to feel about that.
Well, history says.
Hey, I see how it is, I see. Oh, maybe I can break that record this year, I don't know. If everybody, I believe, has the audit report in front of them, I'm Anthony working with Kelly Galloway, just to introduce myself, as their audit partner, once again on the audit again this year. As you know, usually just like to go through the report, hit some of the high points, if at any point in time I am getting long-winded, you need to rush me along, go right ahead, or if you feel like I'm moving too quickly, feel free to, to interrupt me with a question or comment, that is no problem. So if everybody does have their 100-page book in front of them now, it is, is grown to be quite the, quite the report in the past several years. Two or three pages into it is our independent auditor's report. It states, "We have audited the accompanying financials of the city of Ashland as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2023," and the second paragraph includes our opinion that states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position and activities of the city for that year." So it is considered to be an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. It does go on to state in the basis for our opinion, saying, "We conduct our audit in accordance with all auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, along with government auditing standards, and that management is technically is responsible for these financials." Two pages over, on page, three pages over, page four begins management discussion and analysis. I will not go through this, but I do want to highlight this, that this is prepared by your finance department as an analysis of the activities, financial operations of the year, and it's very, provides some very good information, so I would suggest the Commissioners and the Board and everybody take a, take some time and read that section. Starting on page 19, and continues over to page 20, this is the statement of net position, which is essentially the balance sheet if the city were a business or for-profit entity, it would look something similar to this. This consolidates all funds, includes different, the government activities, general funds, along with the business-type activities, which is primarily the utility fund, but does also include the bus system, cemetery fund, recreation fund. At the bottom of page 20, you'll see the city ended the year with a total of net position of 48.7 million. This statement also includes all liabilities, so all debt that the city has. The major, of course, I know, you can probably say I mention it every year, liability or retirement liabilities for city employees, retirement, including pension and health insurance benefits. In total, there's about $80 million of those liabilities, now the majority of that is on the county retirement system, so really you have no, really, much say in the, the cost or anything with that, but 6.7 million of that total does, is related to the police and fire pension and the utility pension in, in total specifically for those. Now, I believe the, the rates for the CERS actually went, went down from end of '24, so about 3% for the non-hazardous employees, and about, I believe almost 6% for the hazardous employees for the police and fire, that actually went down this year. Over on page 24, it is the statement of revenue and expenditures, expenditures and for the governmental funds. These, this is presented in a similar way that items are budgeted. Total revenues for the general fund included, were 3, 31.5 million, majority of that being in, of course, tax revenue and license and permits line item, which would include the occupational and business license fees. Those two combined, I believe, increased almost 1.6 million over fiscal year '22. Three lines up from the bottom, you can see that the general fund actually had a decrease in its fund balance of 1.7 million. That was partially caused by, or even say, majority of it caused by, transfers over to the capital projects fund. So if you look at the last column there on that page, capital projects, there were 3.5 million in capital outlays during the year, which included, I believe, almost a million dollars on a deposit for a fire truck, and a majority of that also being Winchester Avenue related, related costs. There is a new fund on here this year. It's the opioid settlement fund, next to the capital projects fund. That fund was created to account for the money that's going to be receivable in the next few years for the, the city's portion of that opioid lawsuit settlement with Johnson and Johnson and a few other distributors. You flip over to page 20, 28. This is the statement of revenue and expenses, expenses for the proprietary funds, which would include utility fund, bus system, recreation fund, and cemetery fund, and of course, the parking garage this year. Overall, utility fund had a decrease in its net position of $414,000. That includes depreciation on all the sewer plant and water plant items, so it really had a net increase in cash overall, if you were to add those back. One item I wanted to point out on here was the, the bus system. You'll see the bus system, probably about six or seven lines up, transfers from the general fund were only $68,000. That was because this, I believe, is the last year that it's 100% not matching. Is that correct, Michelle? Am I thinking right, that? The, the grant from the FTA on that was still part of the ARPA money, American Rescue Plan, and it was, did not require any matching from the city for, to cover those operations, so 100% of operations were, were essentially covered by that, by that grant. So starting on page 40, begins the notes of the financials. I will not go through each, of course, each one of these, but note number two, I want to hit a few highlights, is the summary of a significant accounting policy, so it is, details all the accounting policies used by the city to prepare the statements, which are considered to be generally accepted, and if you were to compare Ashland to Lexington or Morehead or any other city, they would all have similar accounting policies. They are considered to be generally accepted accounting policies. Start over on page 50. It's, it has the capital assets footnote, which basically details the, provides a summary, I guess, of the additions and, and changes in the, in the capital assets. Overall, the governmental activities had an increase of, of almost 5.7 million, the majority of that being sidewalks, roads, things of that nature, and does include, like I mentioned, that deposit on a new fire truck that was made there toward the end of the year. Business-type activities also had an increase of almost 5.6 million, the majority being sewer and water plant upgrades, things of that nature. Starting on footnote seven and eight, from page 51, I think over to 63, it does go into the retirement plans, if you want to look at those. I'll just mention, there's about 13 pages just, just on that, that really bulks up the report. On page 64, though, I'll mention the long-term obligation footnote, the basically the debt footnote. At the end of '23, there were general, total general obligations was a little over $18 million. And altogether, there was no new debt issued during the year, so, and they had pay downs of almost one and a half million dollars in there as far as debt retirement. Under the sewer and revenue bonds, actually, there's no new debt issued there, and there were payments of almost 1.8 million on those during the year. One other footnote I usually like to point out would be over on page 72, dealing with the health insurance. About two-thirds or one-third down the page, it does present a summary of the changes in funds claimed liability during the year, and I can see something there, but the total, you can see current year claims, as compared to last year, were very similar, right at about $4 million, so the, it actually dropped maybe $70,000 during the year for health insurance claims, but it is holding steady right at about $4 million a year, so. Back on page, we'll skip over, there's more retirement disclosures in the back, but I wanted to point out, on page 96, the schedule of expenditures of federal wards. This provides a detail of all the federal monies that were expended by the city during the year, a total of a little over $6 million for '23. Were required to test these programs based on a little risk assessment and, and dependent on the size of the program. This year, we looked, we looked at the housing choice voucher program, Section 8, low-income housing, and the FTA grant that was essentially ran through the bus system, which account for 3.9, almost $4 million in the housing choice voucher program, and a little over 1.3 million of the FTA grant. I would anticipate this year, upcoming year, ARPA would be one, I think that American Rescue Plan Act money would be, started to be expended this fiscal year '24, so when that money does get expended right now, as far as these statements are concerned, it was just sitting in kind of a cash account, but that, that grant, once those monies start getting expended, will show up on this as well, and that will be a program will be, that will be tested in, in a future audit. So we do have a couple other compliance reports in here, one for our single audit. There were, I think we had four findings that we had included in here. I won't necessarily go, go through each one. They were related to the Section 8 program, and we made, we'd made our recommendations on those, and as far as I know, their corrections were being implemented. None of those were considered to be material enough to lead to material non-compliance or anything, but mostly suggestions and other little documentation items that we noted, so. Anybody happen to have any questions? I feel like I may have done record time there, long-winded, I don't know, so. Anybody have any questions or concerns or anything, or anything I can make?
I have a question, so I remember before when I kind of was curious about this. Explain what you mean when you say we pay county retirement.
So the, for, so the employees participate in the county employee retirement system through the Kentucky retirement systems, is what it is. So you have non-hazardous employees, which would just be your general city employees, hazardous employees would be your police and fire employees.
Just so everybody knows, we're not paying for the county employees.
No, no, that's just the name of the system. I apologize, yes.
That's what it sounds like, no, so.
You are not paying, you are not paying for the county employees. It is the county employees retirement system is what it's called, and, you know, local governments can participate in that, whether or not they are a county, so it's, but no, that is not, those four are for the city, city employees.
Just out of curiosity, is Kelly Galloway now a part of a bigger accounting group? Because it says Cincinnati, Ohio on it.
We do have an office in Cincinnati that we've had for, we've been there for about 10 years. We've had- We've had that office, so.
I never noticed that before.
Really, yeah.
Well, thank you for the report and the brevity. We, we have, we have plenty to read here for sure, and the public, this is available to the public.
Yes.
This is a public document to show what we do and our city staff. I want to commend Finance, Utilities and Engineering for tracking so well the ARPA money, which I know is problematic because it is got so many requirements as to how we report, and to do that is a significant, I'm sure, time, not waster, but consumer. So we appreciate that from you all, making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And I also want to thank, again, our finance department, A1. Appreciate you guys so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'll just, real quick, I just want to bookend this, so it's just a summary. So this is an audit of, from June twenty-three back to June twenty-two.
Yes.
So it's that fiscal year that we're looking back and how we actually managed the finance system. And I'm always the first to say, I'm spoiled when it comes to this, because these, there's a lot of places where these meetings don't go like this.
Yes.
And there are lots of issues, but you all have done a great job. Our city team does a great job, and obviously, this is something we hang on to, this stays at the top of my, my pile at home that I refer to through the year, because it is a, a lot of people use the word transparency, but this is how transparency happens. I mean, these are the tools of transparency, literally. So thank you very much for your report. Thank you.
Now, I do want to express my thanks to, to the finance department myself. As you can see, this isn't a easy,
No.
An easy audit or an easy report, so it with, makes it better with a great finance department, that's for sure.
We agree. Let's give them a hand. I mean, they do a great job.
How many audits do you have? Applause at the end? Not too many, I'm sure.
Not, not many, or unless it's just the fact that I'm sitting down, sometimes that.
Well, thanks again. All right, moving on, I do want to take this moment to issue a proclamation. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the national fair housing law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize the complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help in cooperation of all Americans. Now, I do declare April Fair Housing Month in the City of Ashland and urge all of our citizens of the community to become aware of and support our fair housing laws. And with that, we're going to move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium, address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. At this time, would anybody like to come forward? Please, come. If you would, for the record, just name and address.
My name is Kim Welling. I live at forty-nine eighteen Blue Ribbon Drive in Catlissburg, Kentucky.
Okay.
Way out in the rural. First of all, you brought up autism. I'm a retired social worker. There are more high-functioning adults with autism working in the workforce than we understand. I ask that if you come across an individual that might disclose that they have a type of autism, that you be kind, understand their mind thinks differently than we do, and that you be supportive. I am helping one gentleman in Charleston. I have, in my years, had a lot of contact with individuals with autism in all various stages. I will tell you that most times a person with high-functioning autism has some skill that they are extremely brilliant at, and that should be capitalized and supported. It's very helpful to them in every aspect of their life, okay? Just wanted to add that. We most often think of individuals that are more lower functioning. I am here to invite all of you to the National Prayer Day. Ms. Briggs and Mr. Goop kind of, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, kind of beat me to it. However, let me read what I wrote. I would like to invite you to our annual National Prayer, Day of Prayer. I emailed each of you last night, except a few that I see sitting here. Prayer knows no political party, no political groups, and no political agendas. Prayer is for all of us, everyone. It doesn't distinguish, and God doesn't distinguish. But I will add, each individual are accountable to God. Please unite with all that attend to pray for our community, our state and our nation. There is nothing more than our nation needs right now as prayer. We have a lot going on, local, state and national. It's time that we put aside all of our differences. It is time that we sit down as a group and unite in prayer. I extend an invitation to each one of you. I extend an invitation to the public members that are here. We will be meeting on Thursday, May second, at Central Park, Ashland, Kentucky, at six p.m. at the Bandstand. Prayer is, prayer has awesome power. And I'm not saying that a large group has more power, but with all of us together praying, I pray that God hears us, so we kind of climb the ranks of the prayers that are getting out there. If you have questions, that's fine. I did not, and I apologize, get a flyer to Mr. Moore, Ms. Maddox and Mr. Kelly. If you would each like a flyer, I'd be happy to provide you with one. I encourage you, all of you, to reach out to the individuals that are running. I know this race is very stressful, very contested, and I understand that. I do pray for all of you and those that are running, that the best individuals that can work together win. With that said, I still ask if you would all put your party affiliates aside, extend a hand to anyone running for any office at our local level or state, if you know them, and encourage them to come out and pray with us. And I thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want a flyer? I've got, they've all got one.
Yep, we're good.
Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Welcome.
Hello.
Just name and address.
My name is Susan Hendrickson. I actually live in Greenup County, and I'm here to address the commissioners and you for my daughter who lives on CC Drive in Summit. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration today. You're very busy. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here today to speak to you not only about the closing of Kinder College daycare, but also about the larger problem that most of our nation's facing, the childcare deficit. Losing Kinder College means that forty-six children in our local community are now without daycare. Their families are having to scramble so that they can retain their jobs to keep their families supported, pay their house payments, their car payments, buy groceries. Pardon me. I know that it's become fashionable to say, oh, nobody wants to work anymore. Sometimes all they need's the chance. Two ladies went to the Boyd County School Meeting and tried to speak to them about keeping Kinder College open, finding alternative solutions because they want to keep their jobs. The one is an optometrist office worker. My daughter is a registered nurse. There is also a banker who has a child at that daycare, an Ashland oil worker. We need these daycares. I know that this Board of Commissioners and you yourself have worked diligently trying to improve the downtown of Ashland, to help encourage new businesses to come here. Our area is beautiful. The eastern Kentucky hills are marvelous. We need the new businesses to help our economy. But one of the things those businesses look for is the availability of childcare for their management and their employees, because when somebody has to call off because of a lack of daycare, it hurts the whole company. It makes it harder on everyone. The people in the city and this county may not understand politics, they may not understand roundabouts, and they probably don't understand the intricate nature of promoting our area to future business interests. But what they do understand is the need for childcare and jobs. And I think if the city would approach this issue, the need for childcare, I believe the people here would believe that our city cares about their family's prosperity. And I think that that would be an excellent point to point out to companies who could potentially move here. ACTC already has the programs to train and certify childcare staff. Those childcare positions would be new jobs added to our local economy. Pardon me. There's already families needing childcare in our area. Our daycares are currently working with a two-year backlog, a waiting list for places in those daycares. Now we're adding another forty-six to that list. That customer list is already there. It's just waiting for the business to open its doors. Childcare, ladies and gentlemen, is infrastructure. We need childcare every bit as much as we need roads and bridges to get us to work and school, and we need buildings to go to school and work in. What I'm asking you for today is that you put your heads together, work with the ladies at Kinder College, our local business leaders, our state and federal government, and try to find solutions. Then you get to use this as one more carrot to help bring new jobs to our area. At the same time, you're preventing Ashland from losing the twenty-five thousand plus in current commerce at that daycare that makes even more when it goes out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to comment on that. Commissioners know this, city staff know this. Childcare is important to this commission. It has been an issue. In fact, I can bring staff up. I've engaged with local nonprofit employers that have the means and resources to potentially expand daycare opportunities. I've talked to some folks in this room about it, long before this issue even came up with Kinder Care. Because we're all in agreement here that I think childcare is a form of infrastructure that needs to be supported. The state has funds that they could release that would help. I hope they consider doing that because some of that money's being held up right now. But there is opportunities through CDBG funds, I think, potentially, depending on where childcare's, who childcare is serving and where it's located. And so those are ways that we could investigate creatively funding opportunities in the future. But I will tell you, we are not alone in this,
No.
With this issue. You're right, it's childcare deserts, and the whole nation is going to be a desert of childcare if we don't fund it properly and try to make people understand, like you did so eloquently today, that if you want people to go to work,
Yeah, you have to.
They have to have childcare. And if you talk to anybody that's recovered, one of the biggest challenges they have, not just with transportation and housing, is childcare.
Right.
And so I had somebody working for me that I could not get into any childcare in our community because they were full already.
Right.
So you're right, this is a big issue. It's a big concern to us because it is a matter of getting more businesses here and people that want to live and work and play here, and that will include adequate childcare services. So we appreciate you coming today, appreciate your concern. It's not falling upon deaf ears, I assure you, and we'll be talking to our legislatures, local leaders and federal officials as well, letting them know that we too, as a city, need that support from top to bottom financially, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I just want to mention, and this is an exception, normally,
We don't engage.
We don't engage in public comment, but, but this one is, is one that I've learned over the past few years. You know, we have top two, two, three, four of the big challenges that we have, you know, to work on, and as I've learned more and more about those individual issues, the issue of childcare touches all of those issues. It's a constraint with all of these, as we've looked at getting people back in the workforce, as we've looked at, you know, recovery and things like that, childcare is always there. So I've learned that over the last, you know, three or four years. But then we had a baby, and so in twenty-twenty-two.
Brings it home.
Yeah, and so it, I'm a pretty blessed and privileged individual, and my family is. We couldn't find childcare. And so thankfully, we had someone who did it in-home, close to where we live, and she's been wonderful, but we're on, we are literally on waiting lists right now.
Right.
And so my wife and I talk about it all the time. I said, okay, if we're on waiting lists and we can't get childcare, imagine the person who's, who's trying to get their life back on track and have, has kids and they're trying to, you know, trying to make it happen, and they literally can't. And so I just say that to say that it, the awareness of how big of an issue that is, I mean, it really is, it's in the top issues for us. And so, you know, sometimes it's appropriate for the city to do things, and sometimes it's appropriate for us to, to get out there and advocate on ourselves as individuals and make things happen. And so there's a few groups that I talk to regularly, and this is always at the top of our list. So thank you so much for coming in and helping raise awareness.
Well, I, I just want to say a few things, too. You know, the city's charged with certain things that we have to do for citizens. We do those things. Childcare's not on that list.
No.
Our schoolchildren are not on that list.
They need to be.
Okay, well,
That's our future.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Kinder Care's in the county, is it not?
It is on Thirteenth Street at the college campus.
I thought it was out, you said Summit.
That's where my daughter lives.
Okay. But you understand the city taxpayers don't fund childcare.
Oh, I understand that.
So if there is CDGB funds, I think that's fair. This has always been a problem. I had children, finding good babysitters, finding good childcare, but we can't ask the taxpayers of Ashland
No.
To fix everything
No.
Because that's not in our purview, and while my heart aches for this, I mean, this is a private, you know, I'm a capitalist. Let people start businesses. Did you say they went under at this college?
They're not explaining the reason. I know that the Community Co- and Technical College Foundation of Ashland raised one point two million to build that building as a daycare.
I know the building you're talking about, yes. So I'm not sure why that does, but you know, we don't get involved in private enterprise in that respect. I mean, we just can't. All we can do is make it easy for people to start businesses.
I understand that, but you also, as a city, do have an interest in encouraging it to get businesses to come here.
It's not that I'm discouraging somebody,
Yeah.
But I'm saying that's a private enterprise, and I would encourage people to do it. But I don't understand the reasons why they closed.
Neither do the parents. They were given less than twenty-four hours notice. They were given less than 24 hours notice of the final meeting of the board. The two ladies went and spoke. There was no discussion, not one word. They asked for a vote, aye, and it was done.
Well, I think what you did today by coming to us, asking us for advocacy, I think ultimately is the most important part of this conversation. We will be advocating for our families in this community. This commission cares about families. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you all today?
Thank you. How are you?
Good. I'm Kelly McCormick. I'm the Chief Treatment Officer at Raimi Eastup Regroup. I wanted to come forward with three things today. First, this is National Victims Crimes Rights Week, and we did host a resource fair yesterday at the park. We want to thank you guys for hosting, letting us allow that host there. There were several people here that attended that resource fair with us, just reaching out to victims of crime in the community, making sure they have the resources that they need and would need access to. So we appreciate that and thank all of the other agencies in the region that participated in that as well. Second, two updates on grants that we have and MOUs with you guys. So first, we'll go to the larger state opioid abatement grant that we received. That is where we have an MOU with you all as the city to provide.
MOU, just explain for the public.
Oh, sorry. Memorandum of Agreement.
Understand.
Yeah. MOU is understanding, A is agreement. I don't remember which one it is. They're really the same things. So what that is, is for Raimi Eastup to provide care to the first responders here in the city. So that's your police and fire. We do have two dedicated therapists for that program now. We have met with all of the firefighters and done some education with them. We have some, some new clients onboard that are receiving PTSD services. That is really exciting. And we've been able to do some cultural competency, and we actually attended one debriefing incident with the fire department as well. So that's very exciting stuff, and we, we are thankful that you guys are continuing to allow us to do that. But I wanted to give an update on that so that you guys knew that we were working and we're actually expanding that program based on the successes we're having already. So thank you for that. Third is actually on your agenda today. So our Ashland opioid abatement grant. When we originally put that grant in, we were in the midst of the emergency from the COVID crisis ending. So insurances, Medicaid specifically, were ending Medicaid services to many, many, many individuals. So we were struggling to get people insurance to attend treatment, residential recovery treatment for their, their substance use issues. So part of that grant was to pay for some upfront costs so we could work to get them some other funding, so that we could take homeless individuals from the city of Ashland, because we know that is a huge growing problem, and be able to get them into treatment until we could find a way to get them insurance reinstated, and just so they could, they could get to the treatment that they needed, along with medical care. Because medical care is one of the key reasons that people don't stay in treatment. If you have severe medical issues or, you know, when, when you get sober, some medical things start to come up that need addressed. And so that really sends a lot of people, you know, out of treatment. So we have been able to hire a nurse with your all's help under that grant on campus and be able to provide some of those medical things on site so that we don't have to send somebody out or away or discharge them from the program for medical reasons. However, part of that original grant was also with Shelter of Hope, to be able to send us the referrals for the homeless population, and then also to help us on the backend to find housing when those individuals were done with treatment. So since that is not an option anymore, we actually have been doing some outreach. We have a victims advocate that has been coming around. She does some work in the community, just letting, you know, the homeless population know that we do have resources. We have or are serving over 30 individuals that are designated homeless from Ashland right now. So that is working. We are getting the referrals in. What the problem is, is we are not able to find housing on the backend. Part of that is funds for housing, right? The other part that is not truly understood is a lot of our clients have issues, things going on in their life or have gone on in their life that disqualifies them for any type of funding for housing. Felonies, drug issues, those kind of things will disqualify somebody from being able to access HUD or different, different services. So what we are asking for is an amendment to our grant fund to help us on the backend some more, to help, we have started recovery housing on our campus in rush, so we could help pay for them to stay there, that room and board cost for them to stay on board with us while they continue to receive treatment and while our case managers are trying to help them access housing to overcome those barriers. You know, we have some expungement processes that we can work through, but those things don't happen fast. And when they do have insurance, we get a maximum of like 56 days in a residential setting for treatment, and that's a really short amount of time to try to find housing. And some of our individuals don't qualify for insurance anymore or aren't able to access that. So that would help us if we can amend how we can use those treatment funds that are already in the grant. Initially, it was just for the upfront residential cost. Now we're just asking that we are able to use that at any time during their treatment to help them extend treatment till we can get them into a stable community setting.
All right. Well, we thank you for coming to join us today to give us an update. I think it's important that we do get feedback on how things are going, and this is important for us to hear this from you and some of the challenges as we move forward with this money. Potentially, new opportunities may present themselves financially for the city. And so we'll be looking at any and all requests at that time. So we appreciate, again, you coming today and of course, everything you all do at Raimi Eastup. Thank you.
So would these be specifically for opioid-based cases? Because that's what this grant, okay.
Yes. So we do have an application process for anybody that is using those funds or even is accessing the medical care, because it is, it has to stay based around the opioid abatement restrictions. It is disheartening because we do have to turn people away that are outside of the opioid use population, you know, alcohol, stimulants, methamphetamines, those kind of things are outside of that. So we do have to turn those people away, and that's one of the things that I really want to push.
But for this money, it has to be, because it's the opioid settlement money.
Yes, 100%.
Well, I want to tell you, our faith in Safe Harbor was not, I mean, our faith in you guys, yeah, was not misplaced because we think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
So I'm real happy to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward at this time? Hello?
Hello. My name is Brandy Clark. I'm the Tourism Director for Downtown Ashland, giving an update on what we've got going on. I want to start though by giving a big shout out to Boyd County Tourism and everybody involved in Rock the Country this past weekend. We had the, I think, the biggest weekend for tourism of my lifetime in Boyd County. So it was really exciting to meet people from all over the country and can't wait to do it all again next year because they are coming back. I want to invite everybody to come to the Highlands Museum this evening for a showing of This Is the Ohio: Life, Death, and Rebirth of a Beautiful River. I don't have my glasses on this, why can't? Duh. It's a documentary by Morgan Atkinson. We've partnered with the Northeast Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, the Kentucky Waterways Alliance, the Boyd County Public Library, and the Ohio River Way to bring this film to the Highlands Museum. The filmmaker, as well as representatives from the Kentucky Waterways Alliance and the Ohio River Way, and Congressman Hal Rogers' office will be in attendance. The doors open at 5:30 and the program begins at 6:00. We met with a new boutique owner that's coming to Winchester Avenue. She's super excited to be here. She's come from Georgetown. She's very motivated and excited to plug into our downtown, and she's full of ideas. And it's already begun planning events that will bring other boutique owners together, which is really good. We're working on a series of events with her called Love Local Days that will pick specific days, maybe once a quarter to get started, to focus on promoting shopping, dining, and spending the day downtown. And one month from today, our event season kicks off with our first Makers Market. It's on May 25th, and it will be our first Love Local Day of the Year. Our market will be at Broadway Square. The mill will be hosting a themed brunch, and we will be encouraging our locally-owned businesses in the downtown area to have an open house with pop-ups of other shops inside. So it's a work in progress, and so stay tuned to our Facebook page for all the details. We'll have those out soon. And if you guys haven't noticed, the hotel, they did not have much time to recover from Rock the Country this past weekend because they're booked up with the Housing Authority Conference that returned for their second year in a row. We've had lots of people moving around downtown during lunch and dinnertime because of it. So that's kind of cool. Our submissions for our film festival, we're taking submissions right now for about a month. We've received over 15 submissions from all over the United States and two from the Netherlands. And we've been working with the Paramount to secure a date and a special guest. This year's film festival will be a two-day event, and we received confirmation yesterday that someone who's been on a mission to explore strange new worlds is boldly going where no man has gone before and coming to Ashland during the Cosmic Hall or Film Fest on September 28th and 29th.
Is that Captain Kirk?
I cannot give that away.
Be still, my beating heart.
But has he seen roundabouts?
I don't know. But finally, we're so excited to introduce our new downtown to everyone. Mark your calendar for the first Friday in June. We are hoping to have a grand reopening of Winchester Avenue with special thanks to Athlete Advantage and UK Kings Daughters. We are supposed to have some special guests from Rep Arena and Kroger Stadium to help bring people back downtown. And that's it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All good news. That's great, man.
Thank you for your rapport.
Well, we continue to be amazed by all that you all do in tourism. We appreciate you so much.
I stopped into that boutique the other day. It's a real transformation, and she's real excited.
All right. It's my, my blood has shown up at the podium.
For those of you that I don't know, I'm Ann Perkins, 2603 Cumberland Avenue. I'm the Director of Safe Harbor, and I'm just here for an update on Safe Harbor. On Monday, we are going to close on our tax credit project at Harbor Hill that has been going on for 15 years. And for those of you that may not know, we had a tax credit project with PNC Bank for a $4.5 million renovation of the old TB Hospital. And the city of Ashland was a key partner in making that happen by allowing us to have 34 Section 8 project-based vouchers that solidified that tax credit project. And so, fast forward, it's been 15 years, and the original plan was that that, once that tax credit retired and PNC turned their ownership over to Safe Harbor, it will be under our direction for the first time in 15 years. For the last 15 years, we've been doing basically support and kind of case management for people there. And I just want to thank the city of Ashland for helping make this happen. We have housed 34 apartments. We have 15 one-bedroom, we have 12 two-bedroom, and we have seven, or three, three, or seven three-bedroom apartments. And through the Housing Authority, I want to say thank you because they came out this past week and did, not this past week, but this past month, and did a Fair Housing Training Session for us. We've been housing people at Safe Harbor for over 40 years. But because we have the ability to have a complete continuum of care, we have 60 beds in emergency, we have 30 beds in transitional, and we have now 34 apartments. So we can house about 150 people a day on our property. That means we are putting people back into housing, back into the workplace, and we couldn't do it without the city of Ashland, and I'm here to say thank you. We're also appreciative of the CDBG monies that you all allotted 15 years ago to help make that happen. So over the years, actually, we've probably done about $7.5 million of renovations on all of those buildings on that property. And we are so happy, and we've had people come from basically all over the state who've come to look at our program because we're one of the few in the state that provide a complete continuum of care for people. So when we're housing especially women and children, we've, and I've told you this before, we've housed over 20,000 individuals in the last 40 years. That's really about the number of people in the city of Ashland. So that's a huge plus for the city of Ashland to say that they have put people back into their schools, back into the, into the workforce, and having a safe place for them. The Ashland City Police Department is there in a heartbeat whenever we need them. The Ashland Fire Department is there in a heartbeat whenever we need them. They have meant that we have been a very, for the most part, very safe place for people to live. So I want to say thank you. I just wanted to give you all a little bit of an update of where we are. I've never had a mortgage in 40 years of Safe Harbor. And I'm assuming the last portion of a mortgage on Monday for that 15-year-ago renovation, and hopefully we'll have it paid off, you know, sooner, better than later. But I've never had a mortgage before, so this is kind of a big thing for us. But I want to say thank you all very much. It does mean, I think, so much for this community to understand, like childcare, how housing and those kind of things make such a huge impact for our citizens and make for a safe place for them to live, go to school, and go to work. And I want to thank you all.
Ann, do you have a high occupancy, occupancy rate there?
We are, honestly, we're, I consider us being 100% full 365 days a year almost. So we have a lot of rooms that, in our emergency shelter, have four bunk, or four, two sets of bunk beds in them. Not all of them do. But we try to keep families in their own room as much as we can. So the only time we ever have people, what I call bunking up together, is usually single women that we might put two in a room if there's a need. We don't usually turn anybody away, and we will get them into housing somewhere else or we'll get them in a motel if we are full. But about 150 people a day live at Safe Harbor most every single day.
Is it your goal, though, to get them out and get them started?
As fast as we can, get them into housing. So yes, we get them into all five counties, but, you know, the Ashland Housing Authority does such a great job, as far as I'm concerned, in helping us probably the most because this is the easiest place for people to live, to get a job. We're your biggest, also, we're the biggest buyer of bus tokens, I think, in the city. So we appreciate that too.
All right.
Appreciate you.
And appreciate that update. Full disclosure, none of the items that Safe Harbor has dealt with, as far as with the commission, I have abstained and refrained from voting on those matters. Also, I want to perfectly clear that I was not on the board 15 years ago when that construction project was approved. So, but thank you, Mom, as always, for keeping us updated. All right? Okay. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time, please?
My name is William Reed. I address 207 Providence Hill. And along the lines of Fair Housing and Finding Housing, in January of this year, the commissioners published on the city's website, a rental registry ordinance had been passed. I don't recall if it told them that was passed really three years ago, and just getting around now to and talks about it, but that's, was repealed. But you didn't explain why you repealed it or gave any reason for the repeal. I had questioned shortly after that at a commissioners' meeting at the public speaker section, what was the plan of the commissioners for what would be discussed for replacement of that law? Was something to give lenders an appropriate opportunity to be familiar with rental property information in the city? As you've heard, that's a definite issue. Why is that? Why has nothing been done that we know of? we know of? There has been mention of some costs associated with maintaining the registry if it was not made to be confidential. My comments also ask, what about the loss of revenue by the city from failure of the landlords to pay business licenses or pay city tax on income they earn in the city? Haven't heard anything about that. So will you all make a commitment to answer those questions?
Commissioners, any comments? Is that all the questions you had, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? All right, hearing none. We're moving on to old business.
I move. We order lunch.
Old, old business item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, United Development Law, Grand amended five-year consolidation plan
2015 to 2019, and the amended 2015 annual action plan for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Right. Consent agenda, uh, the staff is recommending and requesting that item nine on the consent agenda be removed, and, um, we'd like to entertain a motion to that effect to remove item nine from the consent agenda before its consideration.
Do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, the consent agenda then is a resolution of the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda as amended for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of April 25th, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, repealing ordinance number 56, series of 2014, which authorized the service agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Silversmith Inc., DBA Silversmith Data.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 2024 grant application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for operating costs, preventive maintenance, paratransit service, maintenance, payroll, and capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of this grant.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an opioid litigation funding agreement amendment between the city of Ashland and Raimi Eastup Home, Inc., regarding use of national prescription opioid litigation funds.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and CTB, Inc., for the city hall exterior upgrades, 17th Street entrance upgrade project, in the amount of $106,998 for the Department of Engineering.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a letter agreement between the city of Ashland and FiveCo Area Development District, setting forth the duties of FiveCo Ed as a project administrator for the sewer treatment plan enlargement project pursuant to ordinance number 61, series of 2014.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Section 2 of ordinance number 68, series of 2023, which is commonly known and referred to as the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget ordinance of the city of Ashland.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item G, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled a municipal order of the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and submit a letter of intent to the Coyova Interstate Planning Commission to apply for capital assistance under the Section 5310 program to purchase a handicapped accessible minivan for the Department of Finance Division of Mass Transit.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, one second. I'm sorry. I, the first item that was for software, I don't know if it has, pertains to this, but there's, there was software that's going through an upgrade on our website that used to be used for code violations and and people to report things that way. Do we have an update on where that is, with that update? I don't, I don't know if it pertained to that item, but
It did not pertain to that item, Commissioner, uh, and I am unaware of that. I'll have to, Mr. Pollens not here.
That upgrade's fully complete.
Okay. Are there issues?
Well, I haven't looked at it for probably a week and a half or so, so maybe it wasn't then. It, it was a system where you could go in and and report a code violation or something, you know, not Ashland cares. It was separate from Ashland cares, but, um, but I'll, I'll, I'll look at it, take a look at it. Right now, if you go to the page, it says it's going through a software update. Thanks.
Okay. Any other new business? Now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Folks, we are adjourned. Thank you.